All here, we'll start with the roll call, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Present.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer? Supervisor Baines?
Present.
Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, if everyone would please rise and join us for an invocation by Matt Arden from River Valley Church, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by David Morgan today. That'd be great. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see everybody here, and I want to thank our leadership here up in front. Heavy is the head that wears the crown, and you all make many sacrifices. You have a lot of burdens, and you have many challenges you face every day, so thank you for the sacrifices you all make up here and the work you do to lead and help our city flourish. So, thank you, guys, and thank you all for being here. So, let's pray. Our Father and our God, we come to you today, and we just thank you. Thank you for this beautiful creation you've put around us. Thank you for this beautiful landscape that we're in, and the view of the buttes, and sun, and the rivers, and just the birds around that are chirping, and all the life that's teeming around us, Lord. It's so easy to get caught up in our own little world and our own little stresses and make this entire universe about ourselves, and we thank you for your constant reminders of love to pull us out of ourselves into something higher than ourselves. Thank you for relationships and love and peace, and thank you that there is such a thing as justice, and the things that we come together today to do is to seek your guidance in these things. We pray that each person here would respond in kindness and gentleness to one another, respecting each other is made important and made in your image, and that we can be humble with each other here today, we can be gracious with each other today, we can listen well to each other, and we pray that the work that's done would not be from us ultimately, it would come from you as the source of our life, source of goodness, source of grace and love. And, Lord, I just pray that whatever difficult decisions need to be made today, or if there's anything that's challenging, or that seems impossible with man, that you would bring clarity to this day, that you would bring peace into this location, and that it would be a delight for us to get together and learn what we're going to do next together, and we would find joy in that. And we pray for these things, knowing that it's impossible with man, but all things are possible with you, and we look to you and we look to your work in us, and we pray these things in the powerful name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. And now, David Morgan?
Please join me in saluting our flag. Pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody may be seated except the Board of Supervisors. We need to convene up front here.
Will Stephen Marshall please join the board up front for a presentation of a gold resolution in honor of 20 years of volunteer service with the Elections Department?
Okay, Stephen Marshall. You know, I think I met you 22 years ago. That's kind of frightening. Oh, okay. Stephen A. Marshall began, oh, let me actually give this to you to hold on to if you would. Stephen A. Marshall began his remarkable journey of public service with Sutter County in 2001, when he accepted the position of Administrative Services Manager for Human Services. In 2008, he was promoted to the Deputy Director of Mental Health Administrative Services. In 2017, he retired from Sutter County. In October 2003, Stephen started volunteering with the Elections Department. The smooth, fair, and efficient conduct of the elections is essential to the democratic process and depends heavily on the dedication of volunteers. Stephen has generously given his time, effort, and expertise to the Elections Department of Sutter County for 22 years, assisting with voter processes at various polling locations as a clerk, an inspector, and assisting with canvassing of the elections. Throughout his service, Stephen has demonstrated exemplary qualities, including reliability, integrity, professionalism, and steadfast commitment to the principles of public service. His efforts have positively impacted the elections process in Sutter County, ensuring that voters are served, procedures are followed, and the integrity of each election is upheld. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors causes the names of its members to be affixed to this gold resolution as evidence of the board's individual and collective appreciation of Stephen Marshall's outstanding volunteer service to the Elections Department and for his significant contributions to preserving and strengthening our democratic process. Thank you, Stephen, for all that you've done, and like to have you say a few words, if you would.
I'd like to thank the board and Donna Johnson and the Elections Department for this award, and I'd like to say that if anybody feels like they want to really be involved in this part of the democratic process, it's very rewarding. It's hard work, but it's important, and somebody has to do it, so I'd encourage you all to give it a try. It really has been enjoyable.
Let's give Stephen a round of applause.
Will Cookie Emerald please join the board up front along with David Morgan with Congressman Lamapha's office, and Isabella Morgan with Assemblyman Gallagher's office for a presentation of a gold resolution in honor of 50 years of service with the Elections Department?
And you're the reason we're wearing these pins, these really cool pins. Okay, awesome. I like that. Nice cookies. Are there any cookies in the back, too? No, cookie.
She made a dozen and a half.
Oh, nice. She made a dozen and a half cookies. That's great. Okay, we're going to present this to you. This is for you, Cookie, and I'm going to read a shorter version of that here. Cookie Emerald, 50 years of election service. Wow, okay. Cookie Emerald began her remarkable journey of public service in 1974, volunteering as clerk at Central Gaither School for her very first election at the request of her mother-in-law, Mary Emerald, shortly after returning from military service in Germany with her family. Just four years later, in 1978, Cookie stepped into the role of inspector and has faithfully served as an inspector in every election since, demonstrating extraordinary commitment, leadership, and dedication to the democratic process. Over the course of five decades, Cookie has volunteered at numerous polling places, including the fire department across from Berry School, various churches, private residences, Orchid Obsession, and most recently at Andres Caparros School. Her service has truly been a family affair, notably during her time as inspector at Orchid Obsession, where her election team included her mother-in-law, Mary Emerald, and her sister-in-law, Rita Buttigieg, and her daughter, Chris Cooley, creating the legacy of civic engagement that spans generations. In 50 years of election service, Cookie has missed only two elections, once due to her father-in-law's cancer surgery and once for a school bond election for Berry School, a testament to her extraordinary dedication and reliability. That's very impressive, by the way. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors causes the names of each of its members to be affixed to this gold resolution as evidence of the board's individual and collective appreciation of Cookie Emerald's exceptional 50 years of volunteer service to the Elections Department and honors her steadfast dedication to upholding the integrity of the electoral process and supporting her community through public service. Let's give her a big round of applause for that. Yes. Donna, can I have you? Donna, can I have you say a few words?
Yeah, I mean, we are extremely fortunate to have the likes of Steve and Cookie working for us as long as we do. Cookie's been here for quite a number of presidential elections, gubernatorial elections, and every election in between, pretty much. She helps keep us organized, she keeps our back room straight, keeps the canvas, the audit part of the election, going and working smoothly, and we are so fortunate to have her. Rita, her sister-in-law, has been here working with us a number of years as well, not quite as long, she's got a few years to catch up to Cookie, so, and we expect another 50 years out of you.
Elections, you never knew that'd keep you so young, right? Keep going. So, we'd like to hear from you, too, Cookie.
Can I ask, we have a raise?
Oh, yeah.
Well...
My vote is yes.
You have to be there at 6:00 in the morning, you don't get home till 9:30 at night, and you make $100. Hmm.
Oh.
That is kind of a problem.
Yeah.
That's why we have volunteers that go, "I don't think so." No, it's been a pleasure and an honor, and it makes me feel good that we are honoring the process in our county, and we know we're doing a really good job. We can also see in other counties, they're not, and that's why we have Donna to say thank you.
David, you want to come on up?
Yes, thank you, Dan. David Morgan with Congressman Lamapha's office. I've got a special congressional certificate to recognize you and your 50 years of service here in the county. I know you didn't start here, but we appreciate your work that you've done all throughout the state of California.
It's always.
Oh, it's always? Okay. I got the wrong notes. That's on me. Good thing I put "only Northern California," so we're good, we're good. So, I've got a certificate that reads, "In recognition of your 50 years of volunteering in local elections to ensure a fair electoral process for the voters of Northern California, thank you for your years of service in this vital role of our American republic, and congratulations."
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Isabella, you too? Isabella?
One more, I promise. I'll be quick. Hi, everyone. Hi. I'm Isabella Morgan with Assemblyman Gallagher's office, and I have a certificate for you, too, recognizing it, and it says, "In honor and recognition of 50 years as an elections
That's pretty awesome. Amazing. And, you know, I don't know if you guys heard, but she was laying down challenges on her
volunteer in the North State, thank you for your reliability, your leadership, and dedication
way out, too, so, you know, one is like, get a raise, and two is, she challenged each
to upholding the integrity of the electoral process and supporting the community through
of us to bring in one person to volunteer, so, you know, I think that's a good challenge,
public service."
right?
This is such a great honor that I get to present this to you on behalf of the Assemblymen,
So, that was pretty awesome. Cookie's amazing. So, we are going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is public comment.
so thank you so much for all that you've done and all the dedication that you've shown
Members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to
our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, we'll stand up for, anybody else want to say a few words?
State law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda.
Okay, let's stand up here for a photo.
Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two public comments. The first public comment is Liz Cervantes.
Okay. Liz, we haven't seen you in a while.
Here we are again. I'm here to talk about the FIRE Initiative that citizens are going to put forth in conjunction with CSAF, County Service Area. We are not a special district. This is the way we're going to get this done. Have all of you had a chance to read the new initiative, and do you understand it? Because I think it's darn near as good as it's going to get. Are we going to make everybody happy? Hell, no. You know that better than anyone. But Supervisor Ziegemeyer, Supervisor Stevens, Supervisor Boone, you all reside in CSAF, correct? You need to get behind this. We need your support. That was what was lacking the last two times. We need 353 signatures. Now, in this time where finances are tight for everybody, right? I know that $500 a year sounds steep, but without local fire protection, your insurance could rise even more, or be denied, which I know how that feels. Plus, property values drop fast when buyers know there's no fire coverage. This isn't an extra cost. It's protecting your home, your family, your investment. I understand the concern, but the $40 tax was set decades ago and can't keep fire truck staff today. Yesterday, I went to the house at Oswald Tudor, and I took my husband, who happens to be in construction. I don't know when the last time any of you visited that house, but it is falling apart. The carpet, they have duct tape seaming together, the carpet. They had plans on the table for a great big new fire engine, and I said, "Where's that going?" And they said, "South Sutter Point," and I said, "Where are they going to put it, since they haven't turned a shovel of dirt yet?" Hoping that the county gets behind this, that the three supervisors, I know all three firehouses have these petitions, we need town halls. And just for the record, I'm going to tell you, I know that you want a 1% sales tax. I know that the county needs it, but when your constituents have no trust in the fact that you don't give a rip about their public safety, you're not going to get any votes for your tax, which is a general tax. So, I'd really like to see a concerted effort. We all unite behind this. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Next speaker?
Our next public speaker is Tony Farley.
Yep. Tony Farley, Northview City, Northview City. Thank you, Jeff Stevens, Pumpkin Pie, Say Love First, Native Service. Thank you, Max Ziegemeyer, Husky Cheerleaders vs. Honker Cheerleaders. Husky Cheerleaders vs. Honker Cheerleaders, want to see that. Dan Ford, Star Wars vs. Wonder Woman, want to see that. Carmen Baines, the first Hispanic Sikh board supervisors. There you go, also tractor man, John Deere tractor, yeah, yeah. A John Deere tractor, diesel engine. And Jeff Boone, the boom, the boom, 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 boom. And Professor Steve Smith at Harvard, M. George. And Bill William, President, the future President. And Colonel at 29 Palms, Colonel Scott Hanson, the Colonel. And our Sheriff, future President, the funny Sheriff, Badger Sheriff, Governor, the media board supervisors, and the Millennial Deputy of Mayor. And also, of course, of course, Sheriff of Rio, from Missouri to LA area. To the handsome guy over there, to Jamie, the older millennial. To James Gallagher, to Jim Nielsen, to Doug Mappa, and to James Gallagher's. I forget him, the funny Gallagher. And also Laura, and Lisa, and Liz Cervantes, the Kardashian lady, Kardashian. She's a Kardashian. And Capitol FBI, and Stephanie, and Gina. On news, I watched Sacamille Station got shot up. ABC News got shot up by terrorists, pretty much. The FBI is investigating it. It's a felony issue, a railroad communication station, it's a felony issue, F.C. licensed facility. It's a felony, it's a hate crime, talking to media and first responders, or politics. Political politics is no answer, never, ever. And pray for Charlie Kirk. Target of the young, Gen Z of millennial political persons like me, young activists. So, pray for ABC News, pray for media, pray for bar, pray for officials against violence, gun violence, political violence. Never answer. Targeting Sacamille Station is never answered. It's a felony. You're targeting a federal facility, technically, so, violence is never answered. Don't shoot the journalists. Don't shoot them. They are domesticers. Don't kill the messenger. So, yeah, don't shoot government officials. It's a felony, it's a hate crime. So, thank you. Also, Jamie, also Dr. Lill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tony. Any further public comments? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to the next item, which is Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial for which prior policy direction has been given to staff, and that require only routine action by the board. The Chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may at its option, or upon request of a member of the public, consider any matter separately. I'm going to entertain a motion for consent removing item number seven for discussion. Move to approve. Okay. First by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Okay, ayes have it. Motion carries, consent carries, and then we'll hear about item number seven.
Project U-25-0018 Campbell, a request to rescind and replace a development rights and open space easement agreement on assessor's parcels 33-320-047 and 33-320-048 to reflect property line modifications completed by lot line adjustment 9414.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Neil Hay from Development Services. Are there specific items that your board is seeking to know about this project as to why it was pulled from the consent calendar? Otherwise, I can review the specifics of the project for you.
Yes, Supervisor Stevens has a specific request.
Yes, Dale, and I know we were in discussions at our committee meeting. I have no problem with this project. My, I'd like a little bit more understanding on, there's been several come up in front of the committee, and just our land use, an overall general conversation on our land use policies, if you would.
Sure. So, specific to this project, it mentions and explains about a development rights and open space agreement. Prior direction from your board was that you wanted our department to put together kind of an informational staff report about all things development rights, the agreements, and why they exist, and then we'll bring that before your board. We discussed that at Public Works related to this item. In this specific project, so the property is agricultural-related, and when the property is split for residential development, in order to limit the expansion of that development, the county requires a development rights agreement which limits the development to one residential property per parcel.
So, on this? Go ahead.
Sorry. So, the development rights agreement predates the current general plan and the current zoning code policies. The latest general plan, 2011, put in place policies that if you, we now have general plan designations at 204080, that you can then only have one residential structure larger than 1,200 square feet, so not an ADU, larger than 1,200 square feet, on either 20 acres, 40 acres, or 80 acres. So, these development agreements predate the 2011 zoning code. But when property owners bring forth a change to their parcel, such as this property owner, because of a map that was recorded previously, there was a development rights agreement recorded. So, then when they make a change to the lines of their property, or they do some other modifications, we have to have your board release them from the pre-existing development rights agreement, and then record a new development rights agreement that continues the restriction on the number of residential unit structures that they can have on their parcel. So, that's the specifics of this project. You can see on the staff report, so there was a lot line adjustment done in May 1995. So, and like I say, our department is working on a staff report that kind of explains, maybe in a little bit more detail, but in a synopsis, those are the reasons why so many of these come before your board, is that only your board can release a development rights agreement and then issue a development rights agreement. And they are, you know, currently required from the zoning code, and when the current general plan was put into effect, there was no action taken to address pre-existing development rights agreement. So, based on prior direction from your board, we'll bring that item, I believe it'll probably be at the second meeting in October, that we'll bring that item before your board, and we can have a discussion and receive further direction from your board about development rights agreements.
Okay. So, my concern is, so how do we choose, and maybe we don't, maybe it's all very spelled out, how do we choose which ones we can change and which ones we can't change?
So, there are policies within the zoning code and county documents as to, so there's a section of the zoning code that talks about a development rights agreement and its purpose. And that's why our department makes recommendations to your board about, you know, what should be done when we bring these items beforehand. Typically, the applicant submits an application for, like, an example, a lot line adjustment, so they're moving the property lines within their parcels, but because the existing development rights agreement includes a document that is very specific to the surveyed parcels, because those changes, the development rights agreement changes.
Okay. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, because I know this is frustrating for you, too. You've expressed this to me. So, I would like to see our land use issues looked at and maybe made more, you know, for lack of a better word, more pleasant to the people out there in the community, that we can do more things if a family member wants to build a house, or that has a lot, or something we might want to look at that, and see if there's some way we can make it feasible for them.
Perhaps, sorry to interrupt, but perhaps we could do a workshop or something, future date, to get more in depth into this discussion, because I think it's an important one, and I think that would be worthy of a workshop, if we could put something like that together.
We certainly can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Neil.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Stevens. Thank you, Neil. I don't believe we need any further information.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Number seven.
What was the question? Sorry?
We have to vote on it.
Yeah, that's what we was going to do next. Okay. Okay, yeah, so I have a motion to approve, and who's?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Baines. We'll have a roll call vote on that as well.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Ayes have it. Motion carries, and now we are going to adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene the Water Works District Number One Board of Directors meeting. Going to go ahead and let the roll call stand, since it is the same roll call. And then for public comment, members of the public will be allowed to address Water Works District Number One Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdictions of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. And then now, call...
The Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. One, a motion to approve consent.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Ayes have it. The motion carries, consent carries. We have no other business of the board, and there's no closed session. So, at this point, we are going to adjourn the Water Works District Number One Board of Directors and reconvene in the in-home, or actually, we're going to convene as the in-home Supportive Services Public Authority Governing Board. So, we'll call that meeting to order. We'll let the roll call stand, and for, I guess, government purposes, I'll read the public comment line again, but members of the public will be allowed to address the in-home Supportive Services Public Authority Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. So, I call for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
First by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Motion carries. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Ayes have it. The motion carries, consent carries. We have no other business of the board, and there's no closed session. So, at this point, we are going to adjourn the Water Works District Number One Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdictions of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. And then now, call...
The Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. One, a motion to approve consent.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stevens. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Ayes have it. The motion carries, consent carries. We have no other business of the board, and there's no closed session. So, at this point, we are going to adjourn the Water Works District Number One Board of Directors and reconvene in the in-home, or actually, we're going to convene as the in-home Supportive Services Public Authority Governing Board. So, we'll call that meeting to order. We'll let the roll call stand, and for, I guess, government purposes, I'll read the public comment line again, but members of the public will be allowed to address the in-home Supportive Services Public Authority Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. So, I call for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
First by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Ziegemeyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Motion carries. appearing on the posted agenda. So, I call for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
First by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Zigamire. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Motion carries. There's no other business of the board. There are no closed sessions. At this point, we're going to adjourn the in-home Supportive Services Public Authority Governing Board and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We will go ahead and let the roll call stand and start with the public hearing or item number twenty-six.
Public hearing to consider project U twenty-two dash zero zero three five Nicholas Tavern, a variance to allow a six-foot-tall solid wall, solid wood fence within the fifteen-foot front yard setback where the maximum permitted fence height is three feet, six inches.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Ravina Soraya, Associate Planner. So, this project is, subject parcel is located on the south side of Nicholas Avenue and is located approximately one hundred and eighty feet west of Markham Road. The project is a request for a variance to allow a six-foot-tall fence to be located within a front yard setback. The fence was constructed a few years ago, and the variance application was submitted to legalize the existing fence locations, and there won't be any changes following this. So, the parcel does have three different zoning designations. It's general, commercial, agriculture, and R1. The fence is located on the general commercial portion of the parcel, so it is subject to a fifteen-foot front yard setback. The zoning code allows for a fence with a maximum height of three foot, six inches within the setback. Anything taller than that would be required to be located fifteen feet from the edge of the right-of-way. Previously, the parcel had a metal fence that was located within the front setback already and jogged back where the gate was. The current fence they're seeking a variance for is built in line with the front of the building, which is approximately five feet from the front property line. The applicant has indicated that they built the fence unaware of the fifteen-foot setback requirement, and the location is primarily for security purposes and to comply with the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control standards. Staff feels that the fence meets all findings for a variance because existing development patterns in the area have buildings that already encroached within front setbacks, so it's not unusual to the area or nor is it a grant of special privilege. There is no change to the use of the property, and there is no foreseeable negative impact to neighboring properties. The project was determined to be exempt from CEQA, and a notice of exemption will be filed if the project is approved. We have not received any letters or comments from the public regarding this project. So, staff is recommending that the Board of Supervisors approves this project with the findings listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval as attached. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ravina. Right now, we'll open up the public comment, or the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? Okay. Oh, you do. Okay. If you could state your name so we can clerk log you in there, because.
My name's Liz Terold.
Liz.
I have come before you to speak about the variance for the fencing at the Nicholas Tavern. I began this process in two thousand and twenty-two. I completed a minor, sorry, minor design review application. Sutter County employee Casey Murray reached out and asked that I pay the eighteen-hundred-dollar application fee. I came the next day and paid it. October of two thousand and twenty-two, I received comments from Environmental Health Services on the design review as they did an evaluation of our septic system and map. They had little to no information. I began a long journey of trying to obtain any easement for the septic. As this was not an option, I went through a year of discussing a purchase agreement with the Catholic Church next to our lot. In the end, we purchased the land, then underwent a lot line adjustment, and completed the application and more fees, started the septic expansion required by the county, and finally thought I could see the light at the end of the tunnel, fifty thousand dollars later. I then received an email in December of two thousand and twenty-four from Ravina stating, "We feel that a design review is not needed for your patio expansion. However, the fence along the front of your parcel encroaches in the front setback. It looks like the fence may only be about five feet from the property line." She then went into details of my options, and I began this journey. I received an email on April first, two thousand and twenty-five from Ravina stating, "I'm so sorry for the delay. I just got an answer regarding the fees last week. We are not going to charge any additional fees for the variance. So, I will just need the, write, need to write the staff's report and take the variance before Public Works Services and then the Board of Supervisors. It'll take a couple months before we can get anything back before the board these days. I'm aiming for June. There's nothing for you to do at this moment, June fourth. I am so sorry I relayed some misinformation. The application fees cannot be reduced unless approved by the Board of Supervisors, so I'm unfortunately going to need to collect another balance. I paid eighteen-hundred dollars in two thousand and twenty-two. They said I did the wrong application and now needed four thousand dollars. So, I'm here to ask you today to please waive the fees and approve the fence variance. I apparently, I would like the fence to remain where it is, as it does not impede anyone from doing business, as our building is also the same distance from the street. We did reach out to the county. We did redo all of the concrete from the curb and gutter all the way up. We did an ADA, not that it was required, but investing in our community. If we move the fence to the projected number of feet, it would be in the middle of a window, which is also not allowed by the fire department, and we'd have to move it back again. The fence is flush with the existing building. It's a beautiful fence, and our improvements have made great reflections for our little community. Thank you for your time and support."
Do we have any further public comment? Thank you, thank you for comments, by the way. No further public comment? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Through the Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Zigamire?
I think what you've all done with that tavern is absolutely awesome. I mean, you've really beautified the place up. It's, it looks amazing. I remember what it looked like ten years ago, fifteen years ago. Wow, looks great. Neil, are, what is a path that we could, you know, listening to what?
Motion if you want to do that.
So, I'm gonna let Supervisor Stevens handle that portion of it, because it's in his district.
Like to hear any comments coming from Neil on this matter.
So, I, I mean, I understand, you know, the department, we have fees, and sometimes they can seem, you know, high to applicants. I think, as I've explained before, your board, our department has fees as a way to cover the staff time associated with processing applications, and it's one of the ways that we reduce our reliance on the general fund. That being said, staff did, actually, we do track our time associated with the various applications, and the style, the time spent on the, I'll just say, the two applications is in line with our current fee schedule, but because our fees were put into effect on two thousand and twenty-three, they actually don't cover all of the staff increases for the labor rates, so it actually doesn't cover all of our staff time. With that being said, I mean, I can understand the, you know, kind of the challenges it may seem for the applicant and the, and the public in going through the process, and I think my staff as well myself are well-versed in this specific parcel and some of the challenges they had because of the limitations on the, on the septic parcel. What, you know, I'll say typically happens with, you know, the fees, like I say, is they cover our cost to provide those services. If your board were to, you know, seek to reduce those fees, I believe that there's a balance of about twenty-seven hundred dollars. So, I believe it's about twenty-seven hundred dollars is the difference. So, you know, we, so it's, there's certainly discretion of your board. If your board were to seek to, you know, not have those fees paid, then, you know, within our department budget, we could investigate and, you know, may be able to find those savings within our department because we've had, I'll say salary savings because we have unfilled positions. For example, we do not have a principal planner, so we have salary savings from that money, but I wouldn't want to do anything to, you know, essentially, you know, discount, you know, future fees and stuff. I'll actually be coming before your board, probably the end of October, first meeting in November, to propose our fee increases for two thousand and twenty-six, because, like I say, it's just an ongoing way for our fee to cover our operational costs. But with this, you know, action, if your board wanted to, you know, not have our department collect those, the, the remaining outstanding balance of approximately twenty-seven hundred dollars, then our department would look to cover that within our existing budget.
Did we do anything that caused more work for her, like filling out the wrong applications or doing things that she didn't need to or did wrong because of your, your department's, you know?
So, I appreciate the, the question, and, you know, I've investigated with my staff, and no is the, is the short answer. So, the way the project originally, you know, started was that it needed to be done to address the septic system, and then as the septic system became to be addressed, and it was complicated because the existing parcel was not large enough to serve and have the septic system on site. So, then there is the cost of, you know, put, expanding the septic system onto an adjacent parcel. Staff worked with the, both planning staff and environmental health staff worked with the applicant to identify a parcel, and I will say, my staff even had conversations with the, it's the Catholic Diocese in Sacramento about trying to facilitate, you know, the, the project. And then subsequently, you know, the, the construction of the fence is a separate action, and I will say, you know, Ravina herself has done a great deal of research within the county zoning code about variance for the fence. So, I think, you know, my staff has evolved over a number of years to where we try to assist applicants to get through the process. We realize it's very complicated. It can be time-consuming, and unfortunately, it can be expensive, but we try to be, you know, very fair and offer the assistance that we can in order to help people comply with our zoning code and get, you know, the, the result that they would like and that your board expects.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of clarification, I, I want the record to reflect that the only project that is on the agenda for today has to do with the fence, and there's some talk about the prior, the septic and the fees related to that. The only thing that the board has the authority to do today is to waive any fees related to this fence.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thank you.
Through the Chair.
Yes, good.
Last thing. Okay, I completely understand what staff is saying. We don't have a lot of restaurants here in town. We don't have a lot of bars here in town. I look at this as an investment in tax revenue that's coming into this community, all right? So, you have my support in waiving that fee, because here's the thing. Anyone can move their party in two counties that are right next door. I say a few miles, but they're more than a few miles away. I love what you've done with the place. It's beautiful. You got a nice concrete area. You got the lights and everything. You serve food or whatever. Been to a few parties there. It's really awesome, and hopefully we get more with what you've done with the place. So, yeah, I look at it as investment, so whatever we could vote here today, county council, to get through this and put a pause on the fees, that's what I'm gonna vote for.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
Can we vote on the fence today and then bringing the other, whatever we need to do as far as the fees, waiving the fees at a later date?
That would be a question for council.
Yeah, the, the fees related to the fence are on the agenda, and those can be addressed today. If there's a request for a waiver of fees for the prior portion of the project, that would have to come as a separate agenda item.
I think, to clarify that, so I was asking if we could vote on the fence allowing and then later on the fees.
Yes, on the, you can vote on the fence, and then you can also address the fees related to the fence portion of the project.
Right.
And I believe that those were eighteen hundred, that was.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to that we waive the fence fees and allow the fence to go forward.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, supervisor, by Supervisor Stevens, Supervisor Zigamire won on that one. So, we got a second by Supervisor Zigamire, and then we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone? Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Ayes have it, and the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, move on to the next item.
Update on federal legislation.
Thank you, Supervisors, for the time to speak today. My name is Jeremiah Van Aken with the Ferguson Group, and I'll be providing you with an update on the activities of the federal government and TFG's efforts on behalf of Sutter County. So, as a, as a federal update on the current activities in the one hundred and nineteenth Congress, it started out, a majority of the year, Congress worked on passage of H.R. One, the One Big Beautiful Bill Act. That was signed into law on July fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. That legislation makes significant changes to existing tax programs, SNAP programs, Medicaid, infrastructure, and defense spending. Drafting of that legislation took up the first months of Congress, so very little other legislative activities were able to occur. The bill modifies SNAP work requirements by extending the age range up to sixty-five years of age, and also requires that qualifying SNAP recipients participate in eighty hours of work or approved activities per month. The bill institutes requirements that states contribute a cost match to SNAP, which is a new addition to the SNAP program. Those payment rates are variable and dependent on error rates of the state. Implementation of the cost match requirements are delayed until fiscal year two thousand and twenty-nine for states with error rates higher than thirteen point three percent, and implementation for states with error rates lower than that start in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-eight. Administrative cost match requirements have also increased for local stakeholders. Previously, the federal government would contribute seventy-five percent of all administrative costs associated with SNAP, and that has now been reduced to a fifty-fifty even cost share split. On the tax front, it makes permanent the income tax rates established by the two thousand and seventeen Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, making those rates permanent. It also increases the permanent, increases the child tax credit from two thousand to twenty-two hundred dollars per child and makes that permanent, as well as increases the state and local tax deduction up to, I believe it's forty thousand dollars a year. So, on the Medicaid side of things, the bill requires states to implement, implement similar work requirements to what we see with SNAP, including eighty hours of work or work-adjacent activities each month, and those requirements go into effect no later than first quarter two thousand and twenty-seven. Next, there was the passage of a full-year continuing resolution for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. That full-year continuing resolution provided an equal number, an equal amount of funding for federal activities at the levels set in the previous appropriations bill for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, which was signed by President Biden in March of two thousand and twenty-four. That continuing resolution for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five did not include any of the earmarks that were originally included in draft legislation proposed by the House and Senate. Committee, various committees across Capitol Hill and the House and Senate were considered. Those bills were related to federal housing programs, FEMA reform, and federal land management. Next, a short-term CR, that is kind of what it's, what Congress is working on right now. The fiscal year, as you know, federal fiscal year ends next Tuesday on September thirtieth, and in order for the government to continue operations, the federal government to continue operations, they need to pass a continuing resolution for a set period of time. Currently, the proposal is for a seven-week continuing resolution, which would fund the federal government through November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. However, that bill, which was passed by the House and sent to the Senate, failed in the Senate. They need a sixty, they have a sixty-vote threshold to pass any bills in the Senate, and there was, the Senate Democrats, all but one Senate Democrat and two Senate Republicans voted against the continuing resolution. Senate Democrats hope to have an extension of modified, enhanced Affordable Care Act tax credits included as part of that continuing resolution, and they would like to see those added on to the CR for, for very specific timing purposes. Those being that open enrollment for healthcare programs begins on November first, and with the current CR not including that ACA extension, it would expire on the twenty-first, meaning there is a several-week gap where individuals who are looking at open enrollment would see their healthcare premium costs increased significantly. I believe it could be between I believe it could be between 70% up to 120, 150%, depending on income. So at this point, there is a distinct possibility that the federal government shuts down for an unforeseen period of time. It could be a few days. It could be several weeks. As Senate Democrats and House Democrats have, have stated that they won't support a continuing resolution that does not include ACA tax credits, extensions, and if there is no off-ramp provided on those tax credit extensions, there will, there, there could be a shutdown. So looking at the expected activities for the remainder of 2025 and into 2026, Congress is going to work on a fiscal year 2026 appropriations package. This would entail new spending levels set by or proposed by President Trump and then agreed to in the House and Senate. The outlook is fairly positive for that fiscal year 26 appropriations package. Chairman Tom Cole, the Republican Chair of the Appropriations Committee, wants to package three bills together for consideration as a minibus appropriations package while considering and negotiating the remaining nine appropriations bills. He hopes that passage of those three will break the logjam that has existed in Congress on appropriations that, that has been there since fiscal year 24. They are likely to consider an extension of the expanded ACA tax credits. So if they are not included in the continuing resolution, legislation has been put forward that would extend those credits independently of the continuing resolution. It is likely to be considered before the expiration of those credits on December 31st, 2025. It has bipartisan support in the House and the Senate. However, just timing of that is very important to, obviously, the House and Senate Democrats. Therefore, that is why they're, they're trying to get it on the CR. Congress is also going to be considering the National Defense Authorization Act, which is an annual bill that has passed every year for roughly the last 50 years. And that legislation authorizes all the programs overseen by the Department of Defense. That bill, because it is a must-pass piece of legislation, often is accompanied by other pieces of bipartisan legislation, such as the FEMA Act, which is something that we're, we're tracking. It would establish FEMA as its own cabinet-level agency and make adjustments and reforms to existing FEMA programs, as well as the Road to Housing Act, which includes multiple public housing-related bills that are intended to lower the cost of living and improve housing supply across the country. They are also going to begin work on the Surface Transportation Reauthorization Bill. This is likely to be some sort of extension of the programs voted on and authorized in the bipartisan infrastructure law. Those are set to expire at the end of calendar year 26. So there is still plenty of time for that bill to be negotiated, but they are going to start working on that soon. And same goes for the Water Resources Development Act, which authorizes the Army Corps of Engineers and related water infrastructure provisions. Here's an update on the fiscal year 2026 earmark appropriations that we put forward. First, I want to state my thanks to Senator Alex Padilla and Senator Adam Schiff for their support of the county's funding requests, and also thank Congressman LaMalfa for his constructive input and his recommendations on our funding requests. And I also want to thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your efforts in ensuring that these requests were well thought out and as comprehensive and complete as possible at the time of submission. The two projects are set to support public safety through the purchase of high-tech radios with the Sheriff's Department and water reliability during emergencies in the town of Robbins at the wastewater treatment facility. Assuming the fiscal year 26 appropriations bills are signed into law through the traditional appropriations process or through a continuing resolution with earmarks attached to that bill, the county is poised to receive $1.9 million in federal earmarked funding. I want to add in a note of caution that while the funding requests have been included in the Senate's appropriations bills, there is no guarantee that the fund, the projects will receive funding if the earmarks are not added on to a continuing resolution. That is something that they will explicitly have to do as an anomaly, which is usually just an additional piece, an additional provision to a continuing resolution. That will have to be done consciously and will likely be negotiated as part of any long-term CR discussions. Advocacy on behalf of Sutter County, this is, we, throughout the first part of 2025, we have been working on, obviously, these fiscal year 26 appropriations requests, tracking the ongoing farm bill and agricultural provisions that were included in the One Big Beautiful Bill, coordinated meetings with House and Senate staff and White House staff for supervisors and county staff to meet with, regularly updating the county administrator on the contents of the One Big Beautiful Bill, the FEMA Act, Road to Housing Act, and other relevant legislation, and also continuing to build relationships with the offices of Senator Padilla, Schiff, and Congressman LaMalfa. The anticipated county activities that we foresee at the Ferguson Group in the coming months for Sutter County, planning and submission of additional appropriations requests for fiscal year 27, that would be in the spring of 2026, supervisors' trip to DC for the Cap-to-Cap Conference or the NACO Legislative Conference, ongoing engagement with Congress and your elected representatives, outreach to grant-making agencies, continued participation in the county's economic development meetings, and continued support of relevant legislative activities on behalf of the county. So thank you very much for your time, Supervisors. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and looking forward to continuing our work with you throughout the next year.
Thank you very much, Jeremiah. Any questions from the board? I just have one. Just, can you describe a little more where you think the farm bill's headed? You kind of mentioned some things yesterday when we had a discussion, but, because that's a really big topic here.
Yeah, absolutely. So right now, the farm bill conversations are very high level between the leadership of the House Republicans and House Democrats, as well as their colleagues in the Senate. That legislation is going to be, I think, somewhat smaller than traditional farm bill legislation is, because there was significant language in the One Big Beautiful Bill that was signed on July 4th that pertains to commodity pricing, crop insurance, and that sort of thing. So the discussions are, are ongoing. It is, has been for the last few years on everyone's mind. It's a five- or 10-year bill, and they have slipped several times and have had to do temporary authorizations or reauthorizations instead of a full farm bill. So it is something that they really are trying to get finished. But the contents of it, like I said, are going to be a little bit pulled back because of the contents of the reconciliation bill.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Well, we appreciate your coming out and giving us the update, and certainly appreciate your efforts and work that you do over in DC on our behalf.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good job, Jeremiah. DC, man. DC, Sacramento.
Presentation on the Sutter County Sheriff's Office 2024 Annual Report.
Sheriff, your mic. Is that better? All right. Green means go. Red means go here. I got it. So, Honorable Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. What we're going to be presenting is the Sutter County Sheriff's Office Annual Report for calendar year 2024. So this report is designed to serve as a reminder of what we've accomplished during that year and also provide a foundation for what we hope to accomplish in the year to come. So I'm honored to present this report to our board, but also to our community. This document will be posted on the Sheriff's Office website for our community to view. The board does have hard copies, so hopefully you'll be able to take those home and kind of read through them at your leisure. I want to start by thanking the members of the Sheriff's Office for all they do to make everything that I do possible, as well as everything that you'll see in this report. They're a big part of our success. I'd like to thank the members of my executive team, some of which are here today, and specifically acknowledge the undersheriff, Jesslyn and Sierra, for their contributions to this particular report. So this year's cover, we decided to highlight our honor guard in their Class A uniforms. So a couple years into me taking office, the honor guard kind of went away. A lot of people retired. So we gave it a fresh look, and we recruited, and what you see is the result of that. In the coming years, we'll be looking to add and expand this particular program, but they do a very good job of not only representing the Sheriff's Office, but representing the county throughout our region, in fact. So very, very happy for that. See if this works here. All right. I don't know if it'll scroll down just a little bit. On the inside cover, we, we wanted to recognize not only the board at the time, but the city council for the city of Live Oak, who as well supports us. In the past, we've highlighted board members throughout, but we really wanted to just acknowledge that partnership and say thank you for all you guys do to support us. So as we move along in the first couple pages, what you'll see is recognition of our staff. So I'll try to go through there. There's, you don't want to see that one. Letter from me, just kind of addressing the community. That's our command staff. At the bottom, we highlight some of the promotions that you'll see there. Again, just welcoming new employees. And down at the bottom of that particular page, acknowledging our Employees of the Year. Moving on to some retirements that we had, including members of our command staff that you'll see down there at the bottom. Moving on to some employee recognitions that we've had throughout the year. Our Academy sponsorship, which still continues to be a very successful way for us to recruit people locally that are invested in this community and that we hope will stay and be members of our department for a long time. At the bottom there, you can't quite see the full picture, but I did want to highlight the Sherman Block Leadership Institute. We actually have people in all three of our divisions that have graduated from this program. Currently, we have two of our sergeants going through this program, and they'll be graduating next month. And so we're pretty proud of that. Really, the investment that we're making in developing not only our command staff, but our future leaders for the department, we think that's very important. See if I can jump ahead here. So on page eight, really just kind of a high-level overview of our budget for the community, where that money is, our department total, which is a little bit under $40 million, and then a breakdown by division. Also, some information on revenues and grants, things that we try to do to offset some of the costs. Our dispatch remodel. So we know we have aging infrastructure. One thing that I'm committed to is trying to make improvements every year within the Sheriff's Office. This year, we're working on remodeling our locker rooms. Last year, we remodeled dispatch. So you can see at the top there what it kind of looked like before. And then those bottom couple photos there, you can see what it looks like today. So again, thank you for the board for, you know, supporting projects like that and making sure that things are nice. Our art contest, every year during the summer, we do an art contest for the kids in the community. We think it's important to keep them actively engaged while they're out of school. And what you see there are some of the highlights of their work and some of the people that we, we selected as being winners of that particular contest. This is an important page, because what we really want to do is highlight wellness, right? And I know that we have a wellness program here. It's been very successful. I think historically, in our profession, we talk about working out, right? Running, jumping fences, doing, chasing bad guys, doing those kinds of things. But in the previous years, we've gotten better at really focusing on the mental aspect of what we do. And so we have some programs, our SISIM, which is really just peer support in a, in a group format if we have a critical incident. That doesn't include just my office. We include others, by-county ambulance, fire department, anybody who might have responded to that is welcome to come to that group setting. We've developed peer support. And then down at the bottom there, you see a picture of Carrie. So she is our mental health clinician. She is actually on staff with us, part-time. And then she has an office off-site where people can go and speak to her, and that's been very successful. That particular funding came from a grant position, which is due to expire. We've looked to see if there were other funding opportunities for that. So far, we haven't really located one. But we don't want to lose Carrie, and so we're going to have to find some creative way to, to kind of keep her on staff, because people do seek her out and, and talk to her, and I think that's important. Again, then we get into just an overview of each one of our divisions. We have three. We have Support Services, which is really records, dispatch, and then you'll see that highlighted here with some stats about, you know, the different types of calls that we take, and really how busy they are. You can see there just under 80,000 calls in a particular year, which is a lot. And then it breaks it down a little bit further. Support Services, our records, civil. Then we transition into some of the other programs we have, like Boat Patrol. Our special deployments through some of the Office of Traffic Safety Grants that we've gotten. Those have been very successful for us. Our Shoot with the Sheriff event that we do every year, that's coming up here at the, the first Friday in October. K-9 Unit. Our Live Oak Substation and their staff. Our Corrections. Court Security. Our Evidence. Our Training. We devote a lot of time to training. Lieutenant Bossy is currently in charge of that. It's not just the trainings that we send people to, but it's monitoring monies that we get from the state through Post and STC to make sure that we're in compliance and we continue to receive those funds. And so that's very important as well. Then we really get into what I, I think is my favorite part of it, which is just our community engagement. And I think that highlights a couple things. One is the relationship that we built with the community and, and how we continue to foster that. But I also think what you see here is the personalities of our employees, which I think is important. You'll see Lieutenant Berg down there at the bottom with his funny sunglasses, kind of looking off into the distance. And that really just kind of highlights how we like to, you know, we're serious. We have a very important job, but we also like to make this job fun and make sure that people enjoy coming to work, because I think that's important. Some of our school visits. National Night Out. Various other things that we've done throughout the, the course of the year. Some of the events that we have up in our contracted city of Live Oak, basketball, where we do a fundraiser for Sober Grad Night each year, where we play the seniors at basketball, boat races, just all kinds of good things going on in that particular community. And then at the end of each year, our Shop with the Cop, which we do in December, we're already well into the planning phases for that. And then concluding with our last page, which has got some recruitment information, then a photo of our new vehicles, which are pickup trucks with our new graphic designs on them. So, so that's just kind of a high-level overview. Again, if you wanted to kind of get a little bit more in-depth, it's available online. So really, kind of in closing, I wanted to just do a couple things. I wanted to give some thank yous. I think that's important. So I'll start by thanking the Board of Supervisors for your continued support of the Sheriff's Office. I know that you guys have a strong commitment to public safety, and we appreciate you guys. Also, I want to thank the community members for their constant support of public safety as well. We exist because of you guys. We're here to serve you guys. That's, that's the role of what we do at the Sheriff's Department, is make sure that we're here serving you, and we do that as, as well as we possibly can. I will say that I still get to pinch myself every day, because I wake up and get to come to work and be the sheriff, and I couldn't ask for a better job. I absolutely love what I do. But I also acknowledge that any success that, that I have or that we have as an organization is a result of a lot of good work. We have so many department heads and other agencies that support us in what we do. And thank you to all of you guys for, for helping prop us up and keep us going in the right direction, because whether it's building maintenance or some of the, you know, the homeless things that we tackle with, with Health and Human Services, it's just, it's amazing the support that we get from all of you. And so I wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. But at the end of the day, the credit really belongs to the men and women that serve the Sheriff's Office, and I want to acknowledge them. And so I guess before I conclude, I just kind of wanted to give a little bit of a, a status of the health of the Sheriff's Office, if you will. So I think in open meetings before, we've discussed that countywide, we usually have about a 20% vacancy factor. So currently, our Patrol Division is at an 18% vacancy factor, our Corrections at 13%, and our Dispatch is at 15%. So you can see, these numbers are slightly better than the county average, which I think is a good thing. We've done a lot of work over the last couple years to really get those numbers up to where they are. At some points, we were as much as 30% with some of our vacancies. But we've got to be able to maintain that moving forward, right? I will tell you that, you know, other surrounding counties are negotiating contracts. One just recently north of us gave a 23% increase over a four-year period. And as much as we've worked, the reality is, most of our job force has less than five years of experience. And so while we've been successful bringing here, we really got to take that next step now and find ways to, to invest in people and keep them here. I will, I will also share with you that, you know, I know that the board did a very good job last time of getting our, our Peace Officer Association with five, within 5% of market, which was really helpful. last time of getting our Peace Officer Association within 5% of market, which was really helpful with recruiting. But they're now already 12% out of market. And I think that just shows how quickly things are evolving. So I hope moving forward, we can collaborate, find ways to maintain our workforce and continue to provide, you know, quality service to the citizens of Sutter County. That would be my hope and my ask of the board moving forward. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the report or the sheriff's office or anything else.
Thank you, Sheriff. Do we have any questions from the Board of Supervisors or any comments? Senator Stevens?
Yeah. First of all, Brandon, I'd just like to say thank you for all that you do and all that your department does. You provide a great service. And one of the things that I love about this community and your department is it is so engaged in the community with all your different things that you do. You know, that's what makes this community what it is. Because if we didn't have a sheriff's department like yours, we wouldn't have a community like ours. And I so much appreciate just all that you do for the community, getting out in there and, you know, the pumpkins, the kids going to the schools, everything that you do. It, you know, you said it was very important to you. I see that every day, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor.
Any further comments from the board? Well, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I love looking at these every year. I like the community involvement and everything. You guys, you guys do a lot. You know, people don't realize how tough it is to attract anyone to public safety, you know? And we do get jealous of Butte County and Yuba County. It's tough, but they're dealing with a lot more revenue than we are, you know? And like we've said this every year, we're the Oakland A's. You know, we do the best we can with what we have. We run the leanest departments in the state of California, the leanest. Check it out. And we have department heads all around that have done an incredible job to keep everyone here, to keep everything together. So thank you for what you guys do and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further comments? Okay. There being none, I'd like to give the sheriff a round of applause for that presentation. Thank you very much for all you did, Sheriff. And move to comments by Steve Smith, the county administrator.
Excuse me, Chairman. We do have item 29.
Yes, item 29.
Approval of the Board of Supervisors' response to the fiscal year 2024-25 Sutter County Grand Jury Final Report.
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. I will still comment as well.
Thank you.
After. Thank you. So this is the annual response that's recommended for Board of Supervisor approval, the board's approval to the grand jury report. So this year's, or I should say last year's, report, the 24-25 Grand Jury Report, had six different reports within it. And quickly read over those. Federal funding flies elsewhere. Audit results halt future program funding. Safer streets, safer kids, better community connections, better community health. Toward and released jail report and the Tri-County Youth Development Center and Maxine Singer Youth Guidance Center. So I know this has been sent to you all, but it is quite extensive. What I thought I would do is read through just a few of the maybe more impactful findings and responses. If I went through every single one, we would probably be here for an hour, but I'm happy to answer on any of them if I don't cover them from your board or the public, of course. So the first report on the airport, one of the findings mentioned that not drawing on or using the allowable FAA entitlement funds account has led to $1.5 million of entitlement funds expiring over 10 years and losing the opportunity to leverage up to $15 million in airport improvements. And the recommended response to that is that the Board of Supervisors disagrees with this finding. On multiple occasions, FAA staff explained the Sutter County Airport would not effectively compete for discretionary funds. So we could not pursue up to the $15,000, or sorry, $15 million in improvements. Also during the tenure of, we call it SABRA, the Sutter Buttes Regional Aviation Association, who manages the airport. At their monthly meetings, they have not initiated any project discussions for eligible airport improvements that total anywhere near that. That being said, I've met recently with the SABRA board and we're going to have a meeting with our development services team and county council to hear them out on some of these issues, to see if we can team and see if we can possibly draw down some of that money or what we can do together to work towards working more in concert with the FAA overall. In the past, we've met with the FAA many times in the past, both in their South San Francisco location, and then now I think their offices are moved to Walnut Creek, a little closer, but makes it a little more accessible. And now we look forward to working with them much more closely. Also, grand jury finding number five, the assumption by county council, the grant assurances cannot be met due to non-conforming land uses without getting clarification from the FAA has led county council to prevent Sutter County staff from accepting or applying for grant funding since 2016. However, we recommend the board disagree with this finding because the county received clarification from the FAA staff regarding grant assurances and non-conforming land uses. So we did specifically reach out and council did pass council as well with the FAA. This, as I go through a few of these, I thought I should have mentioned first that the great majority of findings and recommendations from the grand jury, we typically agree with, and I think it's the same in this report as well. I just, it's, and we frequently implement the grand jury's recommendations and appreciate the time they spend. It's usually 19 individuals and it is a huge time commitment. And I don't want any disagreement here on certain issues to undermine the accomplishments that they've done and the impact that they've had on the county over the years, including helping us, spurring us on to get a new animal control facility and other major projects. So just wanted to clarify that as well. The next report, audit results halt future program funding. That is something we've actually publicly discussed, I think maybe right before the grand jury report was released because we've been working on the CDBG outstanding loan issue. I know when we had those meetings, staff are working on resolving the outstanding loans and the recommendations here are just to work with the treasurer's office on seeing if there are more resources to go through and collect delinquent funds from the outstanding loans. So we'll look at giving an update on this topic overall, regardless of the grand jury report, but we appreciate and we have on their responses not yet implemented, but will be actually by the end of this month through internal meetings, working with the treasurer's office. Safer streets, safer kids. This one's pretty quick. This was looking at various schools throughout the county, including the city, so Yuba City was included in this, and just some recommendations on signage. There was a recommendation made that the board update relevant traffic codes to include standardized traffic signage for all schools, including upgrading low visibility signs and so forth. However, we have to comply with the traffic control for school areas of the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, but we are going to conduct an audit by January 1st to confirm that all existing school signage complies with that guidance. And please, again, stop me if I've missed anything or you have any questions along the way. I know the audience is riveted. I can see that. So, sorry, I'll try to be much more dynamic. I want to hear some clapping or something going on. No. So better community connections, better health. So I wanted to cover a few and I'll try not to take too long, but this is one of the longer ones, just because there were a couple, you know, more impactful findings that we want to explain how it worked because there are some findings that we feel are incorrect. And one, it mentions finding one as confirmed by Sutter County Grand Jury members, site visits. No reception staff are available to the public at Sutter County HHS offices, Health and Human Services offices, except for the acute psychiatric services. But we actually have, I believe it's 13 staffed reception areas. Now, I don't know what happened with the visits as far as what the grand jury members did at that time. I don't know if they were, you know, maybe on a Friday, if it was an office that was closed on a Friday or something like that. I don't know how that happened, but we do, and HHS had a very, or 12, I'm sorry, 12 public lobbies staffed with reception staff. And we've included attachments for all of this and there's a lot of attachments for the HHS response. And I really appreciate HHS staff, led by Sarah Eberhart Rios, for being so thorough in the responses. So there is a lot of information attached to the response. Two other findings. One is that HHS is grossly underspending its 20% mandated funds for community-based alcohol and drug prevention as only $6,000 is budgeted for Friday Night Live programming. And actually, based upon our records, and I'll just read a small part of this, but the 22, 23 and 23 and 23, 24, Health and Human Services spent approximately 99% of the total prevention set aside allocation totaling nearly $605,900. HHS spent approximately 100% of the total Friday Night Live annual allocations for 22 and 23, sorry, 22, 23 and 23, 24 totaling nearly $76,000. And also Friday Night Live ARPA supplemental allocation over the same period for nearly $80,000. So we're not sure where the $6,000 total came from. It's significantly higher than that. The tough part is the grand jury changes over once the report is released, so we don't really get a chance to talk about them more with them to clarify. So, and then the last finding I wanted to address was that staff listed, HHS staff listed in its organizational chart and who are described by their respective supervisor and are designated as prevention services staff are in fact providing direct therapeutic services to individual clients in violation of state healthcare services and substance use disorder mandates. And of course, we take that all very seriously and we don't see that as just an accusation. We get that the grand jury is wanting to ensure that these very important programs are adhered to and keep the county out of trouble. But what I would say on this is that per guidance from the Department of Healthcare Services, it's permissible for one employee to work across distinct programs and be funded by multiple sources so long as administrative and fiscal systems ensure proper allocation of time and costs to each funding stream. And this is consistent with Department of Healthcare Services' expectations for cost allowability, non-supplantation, and the appropriate use of the county's approved indirect cost rate. So the models that we're using, because we have so little staff, one staff member may be funded by multiple funding streams. So it could look like that one funding stream is being used for a different activity when it is not. And we're very careful with this and monitor this and get approval from the state on these various costs. So I just wanted to mention that. Oh, and then on the recommendation, I just want to cover one recommendation that the Sutter County Grand Jury recommended that the Board of Supervisors acknowledge the successful first five program and with the consent of the Children and Families Commission, instruct the zero-to-five program to move back into a community-accessible brick-and-mortar office space by June 2026. And I recommend that the board not implement this. And the language always says, per the law, because it is not warranted or not reasonable. We say that with the best intentions because the law makes us respond like that. But we looked very closely at this. And since March 2020, the commissions operated under an approved field-based service model designed to enhance access, equity and efficiency. In August 2020, the commission formally authorized remote work as a standard operational approach. And in January 2021, subleased its central office to another county department. So, but what we did is look at results since the commission has moved to remote work. And they do have in-person meetings, by the way, still with board members, so commission members. But in the report, you'll see the demonstrated impact since the implementation of this remote model. The Sutter County Children's and Family Commission has more than doubled the number of children and caregivers served annually from 12,621 in 2020, 2021 to 33,548 in 23, 24. So if the commission were instructed to move back to brick-and-mortar work as opposed to remote work, we would have to take some of the commission's money, or not take it, but apply it towards rent or lease fees, utilities, janitorial and pest control, building maintenance and 87 overhead and security and administrative facility support. So we don't recommend that, even though generally I think it's great to be in person and difficult at times to work efficiency, efficiently remotely. This is a program that, based upon study and results, has been very effective at working remotely.
Through the chair, Steve. I want to add on that. I sit on the commission. I want to thank our amazing director, Dr. Blake, because all the savings we've been able to take through that, we've been able to push over towards programs.
Yes.
And just like any other great organization, we've seen our funding go down and down and down. So this is astronomical with the savings that she's been able to implement by doing what we're doing now and pushing them over towards the programs to fund these programs.
Agreed. Yeah, it was a cost kind of cutting measure to be able to maximize the amount going towards the program for the kids. Almost done here. Toward and released the jail report. Not much on findings there, other than the findings we've discussed in the past about the HVAC systems being inadequate in the jail. We've partially implemented the recommendation already from the grand jury. We've received some quotes on the jail project and it is quite expensive, somewhere in the 12 to 15 million dollar range. And these are expenses that you have with the building from the 70s that hasn't had pipes replaced since then, hasn't had, you know, certain major upgrades. We have, we have had jail projects over the years and thankfully, the Community Corrections Partnership has approved $6 million of funding that the sheriff sought out from them. So we're about halfway there and I think we're going to do our best to bring you some recommendations on phasing in certain of the improvements between the HVAC, the mechanical, electrical and plumbing systems of the main jail and the medium jail. And then the review of the Tri-County Juvenile Hall had no findings. And that concludes my report. Again, want to thank the grand jury and again acknowledge that any disagreement isn't about anything personal, and I know it isn't as well when they make the recommendations. And we do our best to implement the grand jury's recommendations and truly do appreciate all of their work on behalf of the citizens of Sutter County.
Thank you for that report, Steve. And first I'll ask, is there any public comment? Okay, then I too would like to thank the grand jury for all the work they put into this. I know it takes a lot of time and effort and it's really a lot for volunteering, but great job and great job on the responses, getting everything together. Then I would ask for a motion.
I make a motion to approve, but before that, I want to thank the grand jury as well. And I hope anyone out there watching this, join the grand jury. Go out there, sign an application, be involved. We need you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Zigmar, second by Supervisor Ban. Okay, we have a motion from Supervisor Zigamire, second by Supervisor Baines. Let's do a roll call vote on this, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Zigamire?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, great. Eyes have it. Motion carries. We'll now move on to district reports and today we will start with Supervisor Boone.
To the chair.
Yes.
Earlier, the chair had directed me to make comments concerning county matters and if I may, I would like to follow up on that.
Oh, I don't know if we're going to allow that today. I think you took up your time already.
That is.
No, that's okay. Go ahead. I'm kidding.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, I meant to do this last meeting and it was totally my fault that I forgot. It's kind of a unique situation and you'll see on the screen there, three kids, I think about 10 years in age. So we have an employee and Tiffany Frye and her grandson, who lives in the Natomas area, competed in Athens, Georgia in the Junior Olympics. And he's 10 and he won a gold medal in the 200-meter dash and a bronze medal in the 100-meter dash. And I just wanted to congratulate him and his family. I did offer if they could come up here, but it's very difficult scheduling wise. And, but I also wanted to congratulate and acknowledge Tiffany, one of our employees whose grandson had this great accomplishment. And I did watch a video on, I think it's Good Morning or Good Day Sacramento, and they asked him what he liked best about running and he said he likes to win.
Let's give him a round of applause. That's awesome.
That's awesome.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And now we'll move to district reports and Supervisor Boone.
Yeah, I'd like to close today with a great man who passed on this week. His name's Ricky Finn. I went to school with him. He graduated in 81 from Live Oak High School. His parents were Mickey and Joe Finn, all from Live Oak, a third-generation farmer, and decided to try his luck at becoming a fireman. He was a volunteer at the same time. I was kind of messing around a little bit with it and he ended up moving on and becoming Sutter County Fireman. So he put a lot of years in and retired as a fireman and we're going to miss him dearly and just wanted to say thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Baines?
Nothing in this town.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Zigamire?
I want to echo Supervisor Boone's comments about Rick Finn. I knew Rick when I was a volunteer for a few couple of years there at Sutter, met Rick. I've known, heck, I knew his mom and dad. I still know his mom. She's a wonderful lady, does a lot for our community, but now you see how well Rick gets it. Rick was an amazing guy, served his, gosh, I think he worked with us over a little over 20 years, just a first-class guy and he farmed too. So he just, just a great guy. Loved to purchase a brick at the museum in his honor. And so football, got high school football, we got volleyball. Our Huskies are 5-0, all right, but everyone 1-0 in the league. It's going to be a great season for everyone. Everyone else is starting league right now, so we want to say good luck to Yuba City, River Valley, East Nick and Live Oak. So hopefully they pick it up. If you get a chance, go out there and catch some Friday night football. I love it. It's the best. But other than that, have a great week.
Thank you Supervisor and Supervisor Stevens.
Just a comment. Earlier, there was a reference to how the board feels about their fire department. And I guess I need to grow a thicker skin because it affected me and I took offense to it. So I want the public to know that's probably one of my top areas of concern is our fire department, what we're going to do, how we're going to finance it and move forward with it. But anyway, I just wanted you all to know that I don't accept what was said earlier.
Okay. Do you have a comment? Okay, ditto. Yeah, and I could say that the whole board would follow your sentiments on that. Supervisor Stevens, so thank you for making a comment on that, supported. Okay, any other comments from the board? Then I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
First and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for coming.
Aye. I'm glad you said that.
I thought you were going to do your statement.
I didn't hear that part.